Good morning, students. Today we start with lecture number two. And it's cover for chapter number three and the section from five zero eight, five zero nine. When I said lecture number two, that's mean we have the second one, we have the first one already. So you need to review the first one before you start with the second one. And it is the second lecture for one thirteen, okay? So if some student on Architecture one ten, if you open this one, you see that Architecture one thirteen. So forget that, go with your from Architecture one ten. This is belong to student Architecture one thirteen. And today we will discuss about occupancy classification and the use from that one. Um, I don't know you um familiar with occupancy before or not? But occupancy just in architecture, just sometime they want to talk about the number from the people in the building. So for example, you go to the restaurant in the entrance and close with the lobby area. You can see one, if you look out on the wall, they can put the note like how maximum occupants in the use. For example, they say three twenty-five occupants. That's mean they allow maximum three twenty-five one time. So if higher than that, you can get the ticket or you can get violation from the people in the building city. So basically today we will learn about that one. Um, I hope that you can enjoy and you later you know how, what they divide in building code for occupancy classification, the use from that one and how many group for total. Um, what about A, B, C, D, F group, something like that as you will learn some about the occupancy lot. Okay, so we start with that right now. Um, when you hear something about the occupancy, usually we have ten general occupancy groups. That's mean we have ten general. They divide by the letter, you will learn later. In the key point, you can see that you need to know about occupancy group, they have ten of them. Uh, how about space? They occupy with a different time or work time from activity, assembly use or how small for assembly use, classify or different occupancy. Um, how about the structure between them or inside of them? And what did the group B, Group E stand for what? Uh, in this chapter, you will learn about that. Group I, Group H is stand for what? Uh, on the key point, you also looking for the international residential code. That's mean focus on residential only. You also have Group M stand for commercial, merchandise and Group R stand for residential. What is R one, R two, R three? Um, so that mean international residential code is show you what is it? And in this chapter, we will go with that one. I hope that after this chapter, you can know exactly what the group is and how you design between the different one in one building or it the same group but different, you know, classification. And you know, um, more information about the building codes about this one for this chapter. So basically, they divide ten general group. That's one of the group, they divide that's many different one. So that's why totally, you look at this, we have ten of them, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten different group. And each of the group one, they can divide more. It depend on the type from the occupancy and depend on the number from the people, general like the age, uh, use it for the condition from that one. So now, if some people ask you how many group, how many groups in, you know, in the building code design? And you said that generally they have ten of them. The first one is assembly, education, um, I call for, you know, alphabet. Assembly, business, education, factory, hazardous, institutional, merchandise, residential, storage and utility. So general we have like this. After that, each of the group one, maybe they can divide more, belong to many condition. They can divide them more, for example, Group A, assembly. We have A one, it cover for theater, for concert halls, for motion picture theaters. And Group two, A two, you can see that is stand for casino, nightclub, restaurant and banquet, something like this. Group three, they cover for amusement, art gallery, bowling alley, place for workshop, community halls, um, you know, any kind of halls, library, museum and Group eight, four skating, cream arena, swimming pool, tennis court. Group A five, they have amusement park, structure, pleasure, grandstand and stadium, something like that. So just know, very basic one, just know that we have generally ten different groups in the code. And after that, a group they divide more specific for each of them. Okay, so now if, sorry, B, uh, when you learn before ten, you can see that Group B is include for the you from the business, a lot of the business one. However, if you look at this, they have many moderate fire load for the business one, moderate for density level, occupants and they cover on the Group B. So that's why Group B standard, you know, thus is cover for business one. And what kind of business is can be banks, it can be animal hospital, can be um barber, beauty shop, car wash, um, cleaner, educational occupancy above trail craze, um, lab, post office, brings up radio television station. So belong to Group B. And if we call that the Group B occupancy group is have the number from occupancy. If some of this one, they cover for Group B. But the occupancy, if they, you know, for example, they have some office or some cleaner, but Group B, they belong to Group B, but they get the occupancy is so high, higher than fifty, for example, and that change to Group A. So that's why if you see the group one like this, they have condition. They have something like the you from the business, the occupancy and, you know, they can change for another group. It's not keep like that forever. So now if you go with Group E, E stand for education, but what kind of education? Education, they have occupancy include among the orders, the you from the building, the structure. So that's why more person at any one time for education purpose through trail craze. And this group include for building, the structure and everything for personal care. Serve it for fewer than twenty-four hours per day. That's mean they work look like daycare, right, like this. So that's why, um, the education for Group A, you need to know that from the childcare, not in twenty-four hours service. And it belong to Group E. And if you have the Group E like that, um, the childcare, they should provide for children two years old for the A or less than that for the childcare, it's include in Group E. And education facility limit to you for older student. If older student and it just, it's not in the group anymore and it change to class B occupancy. See, so if you see Group B or Group E, some kind they change, it depend occupancy, depend on the, you know, the, the purpose from the user. And the group is just general, meaning and after that they can change to another one if the occupancy or condition for user is different, so they can be change. So now if you go to F, F usually factory, it stand for factory, industry, Group F. This one in look for the use for the building or the structure. Some of them, you can see that it's regard with a loss from manufacture, part packaging or repair or process for operator. So that's why if you look at this, Group F may be aircrafts, appliance, automobiles, bakery, business, cabinet and room, clothing, electrical, uh, electric generation, plants, electronics, food professing, larger than two thousand five hundred foot feet. Uh, furniture, so that's mean meal work, printer or publishing. So that's why this one a lots of factory industrial. So if you look at this, they have separate for two, Group F A one and Group F two. F two is more material than, for example, brick and masonry, ceramic products, factory, glass products and cheap sum. Some kind like Group F two belong to factory, but is focus on material more than Group F one for professing or, you know, some kind like, um, factory, okay? So if you move a little bit more, you have Group H. And Group H usually is stand for the hazard, so hazardous. So if you have this group, so that's why all of the structure may be more special regard with the fire. So the material, they call that's the hazardous materials. That's, um, the Group H classification, it varies based on the type, the quantity, the condition when you use the storage. So that's why Group H, um, they usually call that the hazardous material. The hazardous material, that is the material easy to burn. So that's why fire structure is very special in this group. And the building codes, um, if you, some people apply for Group H, it take time to go, um, focus on the fire structure a lot because it's regard with, um, the hazardous material. Okay, this is some of the table, they let you know that's the class, which one is allowable, which one not applicable for, you know, maximum people, something, this is not really layer, but actually you can open the book, you can see that um, in the material is different and you can maximum allowable for quantity per contract area. Hazardous, some kind we call that the hazardous material, that's mean we need to review with the fire, some kind like, they say that's combustible. That's mean easy to burn, easy, no, not easy to burn, easy to fire. So that's why material is, um, some of them they allow, some of them may not. So this table, they let you know which one you can use material in Group H. And they have very clear about clarification for you can see that's allowable, how much you can do and some kind not applicable, something like this. So now, and that's Group H. Group I is stand for institutional, Group I institutional. It usually you for, um, the building structure. Some of them, they care for supervision and provide for persons. So if you look at institutional, they have classify a Group I and they call that the Group I. So that's why they have three proud times. So if you look at this, that the main, and after that they have another one. So if you have Group I one, this belong to some of the alcohol and drug center, um, concrete care facility, group homes, halfway house, residential board and care facility. That means some kind is, um, facility in social rehab it's facility. So Group I institutional. I two, it may be hospital, nursing home, psych- psychiatrics, hospital or foster care. So that's Group I two, we have a lot of desire on I two. If you are select, um, architecture major, I think that Group I two is a lot of them, a lot of company they, they work with. Because I two, for example, the hospital or nursing home or some kind like, uh, the foster care, you you I two. So I two is one of, um, the group, a lot of people desire for. Group I three is cover for jails, uh, prison or, you know, at the center for detention center for some kind like, um, specials of it, I three, but not much. I think that's on thirty years, I'm working on architecture. I have only one desire for TOAC, um, prison, jails, only one. It's on flies, go to the south, San Diego, it's so long ago, just one only. And it's so funny, um, when I work for the name from X N T P. And when I work for that, they order for design for TOAC, the name is TOAC jail prisons. And when they design, um, for that one, we take like maybe, uh, six months, three months to design for that one. After that, when we finish the design for the first phase and we transfer to development, they change to hire another architect consultant. Do you know why? Because this one is so special. When we design everything about the structure, about architectural and they want to stop us right there before we jump to another consultant about electrical and electrical, mechanical and plumbing. The reason because they didn't lie, we know a lot about the desire for jail and prisons. So that's why, um, they change another architect, just one reason, because they don't want, we know a lot. That mean everything about the design, so they change another one. That the, uh, I mean, just one, only one, um, Group I three, I'm design during, I mean, thirty years, I'm working on architecture. So now, last one is the Group I four is usually for child daycare and adult daycare. That's mean all of the daycare, it belong to I four. So remember, daycare belong to I four. So now we go with, uh, Group M, Group M is stand for merchandise. And the Group M, um, they use for a lot of the store. So law retail, wholesale, um, building with Group M, they see a lot. So that's why usually we have a lot of desire for Group M, especially for retail. So on the Group M, it can cover for department store, drugstore, greenhouse, markets, a lot of market unity desire for retail and wholesale store. Retail and wholesale store is very easy on design because everything very standard. You don't have any specific for that one. So on retail one, you desire very basic building with, um, you know, a wall, spade and, um, plumbing fixture, everything very simple for the retail one, um, office. But the cell rooms is different, um, greenhouse, drugstore. So that's why if you go to M, it's simple, this is regard with, um, uh, with the, the, the store, the drugstore, every care for the store. And after that, we go with R, R is a lot of them. R is then for residential. And if you tell that they designed house, you okay. Because Group R is, um, you know, everything cover for residential projects. And Rs, if you know about R, they have a lot about for the use for the people to live in, to slip in the purpose. And after that, relate with the law botanical, fire service. And if you take care about residential projects, you have, um, to do for four different one like this. Um, if you go with F R one, it's for design for any house larger than ten occupants, R one. And you can do for hotel or the motel, larger than ten occupants, so Group R one, you can do motel. R two is a cover for apartment house, larger than sixteen occupants. You can do hotel, you can do, um, hotel for non-teen transition. And we can desire for motel also for vacation house on Group two. Group R three is the house for residential is less than five person. It can be two children unit. And right now, if you, uh, if you go with, um, my, um, channel, Happy Life True Life YouTube, you can see, uh, last week I share with you about ADU. It the one of them, a lot, a lot of citizen right now, they desire for ADU. ADU stand for accessory building unit. That mean you create something extra one from your existing house. And right now, the code they allow you to do that. Some people, they have the land so huge and existing house not big. So right now, they have the good chain to create for ADU and after that they have junior ADU or expand the house for many reason. So Group R three is the one we work a lot. So it's cover with residential and the house with, um, less than five rooms and less than five occupants. That Group R three. If you work for the major for architecture and you graduate from this one, I'm guarantee with you, you work a lot with residential and commercial, hazardous, um, childcare, uh, food store, something like that, not much. But the restaurant, theater, supermarket, shopping center and house, residential house is a lot, a lot of, especially twenty-four fitness, um, that's a lot. That mean a lot of projects you need to follow in. So that's why residential and commercial is two of them, you see a lot in your career. Group R four is include for alcohol, drug center or another one, for example, um, halfway house, residential, a board and custodian care facility, social rehabilitation facility. So this one more bigger than group for R four, not much, you not see a lot in your career design. Outside of that, we have more Group S and Group S stand for storage. And the storage, that mean you cannot leave over there, you cannot sleep over there. You just do some kind, um, working and after that, uh, leave alone for the storage. So, um, S they divide by two, S one and S two. S one cover books, paper in rolls, clothing, furniture, cranes, lumber, monitor, vehicle repair garage. Um, this is S one. And S two it cover with, um, cement in bag, aircraft hangar, dairy products, dry sell berry, electric, electric motors, food products, uh, chips and brewer class, a lot of material on contraction, it belong to, um, S two. That mean the storage for S two. And U is the group, they call that's for, uh, the group U, um, un. If you look at this, they call that's, this, the U is, um, they have like unverified. So this Group U occupancy, they have, uh, the structure varies, but it's usually not excessive. Group U, for example, you can see that agriculture building, barn, carport, fence more than six feet in high, you call that Group U. And, um, private garage, retaining wall, shed, stable, tanks, tower. So basically, Group U is the garage, so you can see Group U for in your house. For example, you have the house and you desire for the garage. And the garage, if you have four bedroom, three bedroom, three bathroom or, you know, some living kitchen, something like that, in the room, separate between room and another room, it the same group. But if you go with the garage and if the garage attach with your existing house and the wall between the garage and your house, it should be fire rate. And they need to have the gypsum X, the special material for fire. You need to design that one up to the roof shading. So that's why between the garage and the room is different roof because you have, um, Group U for the garage and after that, the other group for the house residential. So that's the reason between them, we need to special, uh, wall for make sure that it is belong to the coast, it is a fire rate code. Okay, so, uh, basically you learn ten of the general group already. So now I just, um, share with you a little bit about one of the building, but they have a different kind of group and what you need to do with that one. For example, you have the big building like this and you have Group B for office. After that, you have Group S for storage, you have Group F for manufacture and Group H for hazardous. Because the hazardous, so that's why the wall around them, you need one hour fire rate resistant for make sure that, uh, in case happen in the, uh, in this room, it's not affect to another room around. So between Group B and Group S, you look at this, maybe you consider a accessory. So none separate or separate occupancy if comply with the section five oh eight. So you need to go fire away, you see that Group B how maximum for the office one and after that storage. Storage is usually big, but not, um, a lot of occupants. So, and after that, you have this one, the big area for Group F manufacturer. And it can have a lot of thing right here, so that's why occupancy right here bigger than. So you look at that, just one building, but they divide many different groups and you need to solve for each of them, okay? In another example, you can see that Group B for business or non-H, that mean not hazardous. And this is Group F again, manufacturer. This one, Group H for permit size, that mean they have the limit size. And after that, this one is the table five oh nine, this, this is the room for, you know, um, in accident seat. So that's why you need to see this one, the main group right here, the factory. And after that, Group B. So because this is Group B and Group F, so we don't need to fire barrier. This one and this one, you don't need to create the fire wall look like H. But this one, because this is the hazardous. The hazardous, that mean they have storage for the material combustible, that mean easy to fire. So that's why the wall right here should be one hour fire rate, okay? One more time, one hour fire rate, that mean you have the special gypsum X and you need to, um, to, to design for up to the roof shading for make sure it's not affect to this area if in case this one, uh, fire or something like that. Okay, so more example for that, so you can see that between the group and after that you have another group. We have very special fire separation. For example, this is Group B for business and Group A for assembly. And you need to have the wall around Group A, we need to do fire separation wall for this one, for safety. More example like that, so, um, you can know that's even the same occupancy, the same group, but they different, they divide by smaller section and we have different one. This is another example, you can see that Group A two, that mean assembly. R one, residential housing and B for business. So between business and R one, we have fire resistant. And after that, assembly two, um, residential, we need that. Why? The reason because they jump to the roof to another roof and this is different. So that's why we need to fire rate separate for that one. This is another table to explain more about, you know, um, how do you the occupancy, how do you, uh, uh, for the room, separate that for requirement between group and group, you see that's between group and group. How we can use that for, uh, the separation, one hour? If they say the cars end, that mean none vibrate, one for one hour, two for two hour, none. That's mean you don't need to worry about the wall, the fire separate, fire separate wall. But if they say one, that mean you need one hour between them, two or two hour. So more information about this one. So that's why on the chapter, on this chapter, you learn how about the different kind from the group one, the main thing. You need to learn how about the different kind from the occupancy group, uh, classification and the use from that. Generally, we have ten of them, ten of occupancy group. And after that, each of the group one, they can divide more section for that one. So go back again, if ten, we can count that's for A, B, E, F, I, M, U. And, um, I think that S for storage. So basically, if they count like, they call that the Group A, A stand for assembly. And assembly, we have four different one, A one, A two, A three, A four. And assembly, we have four different one, A one, A two, A three, A four, B for business, we have B one, B two. And uh E for education, again we have E two, E one. And after that we have F, F stand for factory, H stand for hazardous material, that's mean easy. Um some kind like combustible material, that's mean easy to fire. And we have S stand for storage, and uh U for garage roof some. F stand for factory, uh M for merchant type, so basically we have ten of them and each of them divide. I hope that it will be um. Have you understand about the group in uh building code? And if you have any question, just email back to me, um with this chapter, this is the second one. So I hope that you have the time to go over with the first one and so on of the. Study section over there is Monty Vichoy and you continue with this one. And uh we have um the fourth section, it start from next week, I hope that from now until the weekend. You can email for me, for make sure that's everything will be okay with you on the fall semester. Because email is the. Right now, temporary right now in this hall, in the feeling uh difficult periods, this is. The best communication between me and you. So even right now I change this one to the online course. But I hope that you spend more time to reading, to answer the question and if you have um question to e- email me. I will open uh conference Zoom, but this is optional. Um you don't need to log in on Tuesday, Thursday. Because this is become online slash right now, so you don't need to log in on Tuesday, Thursday, however, but some student. Log in on Tuesdays, Thursday, I give the credits, extra credit for that student. And this extra credits will be add on the final, okay? So hope that you enjoy the class and uh next time. If you look on Happy Life July YouTube, you see A D U is the first example. For you understand about how to design for A D U's. In this weekend, I continue with the second one, that the extra one, I want you learn more about the code. For both class, Architecture one ten and Architecture one thirteen about different things. Uh maybe I will share with you about how to know um. Design the patio, cover patio and enclosed patio. And by the way, I also share with you about the concrete. Uh block around your house, usually in the boundary house. So if 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 you have any comment for this one or you have comments for this one, just email back to me. And which one you interesting with the topic, let me know and I try to do. To share with you on Happy Life July. Thank you so much for watching um this chapter three and section five away five oh nine. This is lecture number two for Architecture one thirteen. I will continue lecture number three on the weekend and remember. After you read on of the chapter, we have the question. They call that the quiz, but this is the assignment, so usually we have thirty five of them. Monty Vichoy, I need to see your answer, email back to me, don't later than the weekend for that week. For example, when we start from fall semester next week, I need to see a session. I mean study session number one and session number two, no later than uh the weekend. That mean the week from the fall semester start, so remember. So this is on of the question in there I pose for you, easy to do beside of this one, you can open canvas assignments, you can see. This one also, okay? So that's it, everything uh I want to share with you today. One more time, thanks for watching and hope you can go over with the class of uh very good grade. And it happen, uh any question, you can email me on this one and see you next time. This is some kind, just extra one for remind you, that's the textbook at I B C, I B C Study Companion. Uh this one I don't think we need anymore because um. We come to online right now, so it's gone, just extra, okay? And that's it, I think that's, see you next time.